This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to the Clatsop County Planning Commission Regular Meeting. It's Tuesday, March 9, 2021. We'll go ahead and do the call to order. Clancy or Gail, could you please call the attendants?
We have two vacant positions, and Christopher Farrar is excused. John Orr.
President.
Lam Kwong.
Here.
Nadia Gardner.
Present.
Robert Strickland.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, I'll take a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented.
Oops, do we have a quorum? Question mark.
Yes, I believe so.
Okay.
Is Lam online? Wasn't that the missing piece?
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, he's there. I see his image now.
I moved away to the opposite. The agenda as presented. And this is, this is Robert over here.
Thank you.
I second the motion.
You can't second. I already seconded.
Oh, okay.
Second, and thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, the motion passes unanimously. Business from the public. So next, we'll do the business from the public. This is the opportunity for anyone to give a brief presentation about any land use planning issue or county concern that's not on the agenda. All speakers from the floor are to state their name and address before speaking. If you're appearing in a representative capacity, please identify who you're representing. Do we have anyone today who wishes to speak? Looks like we have Jed Arnold, Commissioner Bangs, and Jason Pollack, and a unidentified citizen in the room. If you'd like to speak, please unmute yourself. All right, sounds like nobody is interested in speaking today. Thank you for your presence. All right, let's move on to the minutes. For the minutes of the February 9, 2021, regular Planning Commission meeting.
I see the Mexican flag.
Does anybody have any corrections? Yes, Robert Strickland.
With only three of the planning commissioners present? No, but I will be abstaining because I wasn't present. As far as being able to act on this, it's just a parliamentary question. Are the three of you capable of addressing the minutes? Because you're certainly not a quorum.
I think a quorum is present, but the vote, yeah, would be only three of us. Gail, do you have an answer to that question, or Clancy?
So according to the adopted bylaws, this is Article 6, and it's Section 4. It says that the four members shall be necessary to constitute a quorum. In determining a quorum, all members present at the meeting, including the chair, and any members who may from time to time abstain from voting on an issue, regardless of the reason for the abstention, shall be counted. All actions of the Planning Commission shall require the affirmative vote of the majority of the total appointed membership. So to me, that would, your appointed membership right now consists of five members. So it would take three of you to approve the meeting. You have established that you have a quorum as four of you are present.
And three of us can vote on minutes, which is still a majority of the current makeup. So does that answer your question, Commissioner Strickland?
No, you know, the, the current makeup, isn't that irrelevant? That the Planning Commission requires four to be a quorum? I'm just not clear. There, there seem to be somewhere it says if people can drop out and abstain, and that doesn't change anything. So I'm guessing that four people present does create a quorum? So we say you can address, you know, do action items, even though you know you only have three people who are capable of taking action? So which section was that that references people who abstain? It doesn't matter?
The section that I was reading is Article 6 of the adopted Planning Commission bylaws that were adopted on June 13, 2018 by the Clatsop County Board of Commissioners. In Article 6, subsection 4, it establishes a quorum as being four members. Remember that you typically would have seven members, but we are short two members because of resignations, one in February and one in January. And then it goes, the subsection 4 goes on to say that the quorum includes members as, who may from time to time abstain from voting on an issue.
Okay.
And then the last, and then the last sentence of Section 4 says that all actions of the Planning Commission shall require the affirmative vote of the majority of the total appointed membership. Since your membership at this time is currently five, the majority would be three.
Total appointed membership. So do people serve until they're replaced? So is Bruce Francis, you know, even though people have resigned, are they still considered appointed membership? Are Murney and Bruce still categorized as appointed membership even though they have both resigned? You know, are people, are people sitting members until they have been replaced?
Given that they have tendered their resignations and presented an effective date of that resignation, I would not consider them currently appointed members.
So this is the
Okay, so it doesn't say anything here. Is that you're a member until you're replaced?
I don't believe it says that anywhere in the bylaws. No. I think we should go ahead and move forward with this.
You know, that's the way it is, that, that you remain in office until you're, you've been replaced.
I have also heard of that, but I don't believe in our bylaws. So Robert, let's, let's go ahead and move forward with any, from Commissioner Kwong or Orr who were present at the meeting. Did you have any comments or corrections to the minutes?
No, I do not. I had technical difficulties, so I had to give up.
That's right. You were there for part of the meeting.
Yeah, I'm in the county offices now, and, you know, they'll be serving drinks in a few minutes.
Well, in that case, do you feel like you need to abstain from the vote, Commissioner Orr?
I do. I do. I couldn't, I couldn't really track with anything.
What I might suggest, then, is that we continue this item until the next meeting when we have Commissioner Farrar with us. And then, then maybe that would allay all questions. Does that make sense, sense to you, Ms. Hendrickson?
Yeah.
And, and the commissioners? Okay. Let's see, to continue, shall we vote on that continuance? I'll take a motion in a second. No?
You, you, do you have people to do that? Yeah, yeah, you do, kind of.
I think that anyone could vote on a continuance, just not on the actual minute contents of the minutes. Can I take a motion in a second from the commissioners?
I will move that we table or continue the, vote on the adoption of the minutes until the next meeting, provided there is a quorum at the next meeting.
Done. Table or continue?
Continued.
Do we have a second?
Okay, I'll, I'll second the motion.
Thank you. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so for the minutes of the February 9, 2021 Planning Commission, we'll go ahead and continue those till the next meeting, and hopefully we'll have the quorum available to vote on that meeting. Let's move on. Comprehensive plan update. Would staff please present the update?
Yes, the committees have continued their regular meeting schedules. They are just completing a wrap-up of Goal 5, and also, we combined with that Goal 13, both were dealing with energy conservation and energy, energy sources. Starting in March this month, we'll be getting a review of Goal 6, which is air, water, and land quality, land, air, water, and land resources quality. And then we will also be working with Crest this month and the state to put together a workshop on wetlands. Crest is wrapping up the work that we had them complete to update our Duncan Thomas Report, which was originally done in 1982. But Crest is working on remapping that and helping us develop a definition of riparian corridors. So we expect that that workshop will probably take place either late March or early April. And in the meantime, we just continue moving forward.
Any questions for staff? Hearing none, I have one. How about filling those vacancies, vacancies on the community groups?
Yeah, the community groups really are not that understaffed. We agreed back in December when we brought our last round of appointments to the Board of Commissioners. They had expressed some concerns about appointing members at that time, knowing that a new board would be coming in in January. And so what we agreed to do as staff was to send out another notice of applications, which closed about a month ago. And those applications will be going to the Board for Work Session Discussion on March 16. And I believe that we had three applicants. If I remember correctly, we may have had two.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Strickland.
Was the thought that any appointees, your new appointees would be expected to review all the past records, you know, the, the, the records of all the minutes of their local groups or anything like that? You know, is there any burden of expectation placed on new appointees to the community groups?
Staff had certainly not made that expectation. Any more so than we would ask any planning commissioner to go back and review all the minutes of all the previous meetings of the planning commissions. I think that would be something that would be the responsibility of the applicant who is appointed, if they wanted to go back and take the time to do that. Certainly, staff is available to help orient the commissioners and to provide, or citizen advisory committee members and to provide them with any background materials that they would be interested in having.
Any other questions or comments from the commissioners? All right, let's go ahead and move on. Thank you so much, Ms. Hendrickson. Special projects. Would staff give the special projects update?
Yeah, so there really are not a lot of updates this month to our special projects. You'll see new items are updated in yellow, and we have no yellow items on this month's review. I did email to the Planning Commission yesterday a packet of information that will be going to the Board on March 16 for a work session item. And that work session item is related to developing an annual work plan for the Land Use Planning Division within the county. We have laid out a tentative schedule for the Board to review. This year would be an abbreviated version of that because we're already into our budgeting process. But the goal ultimately is to begin a process in September that would link the work of the planning staff and the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners together, based on that input from the Board about what their priority projects would be. And then that would give staff a chance to budget any items in the upcoming fiscal year that we may need to request funding for. So the agenda item was provided for you right now for informational purposes only. It will be going to the Board on March 16. And then depending on the Board feedback that we get at that time, we may be bringing this back to you at your April meeting for some additional input before it would go back to the Board for one more work session in May. And then at that point in June, we would ask the Board to formally adopt the final work plan. And then, beginning in the new fiscal year in July, then we would begin implementing those approved work plan projects. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I was hoping, Ms. Hendrickson, you could give a summary of your work session, which you says at the top is upcoming, but it's actually passed on short-term rentals. And what came out of that?
Right, so the Board, we put six questions to the Board that we needed input on at the meeting, which I believe was February 24. And at that time, the Board agreed to move from a five-year permit to a two-year permit, that the permits would not be transferable, that the permit fee would remain at $550, which is the current fee that we now charge for the five-year permit. And there was one other item which escapes me at the moment. So we'll be bringing those, and then there were two questions, which won't be addressed in an ordinance right away, but will require going back to the Board for a work session on April 20 to bring those draft changes and some additional input and process, proposed processes, back to the Board at a work session for additional input. So that's where we stand at this point.
Commissioner Strickland, you had a question or comment?
Yeah. In the battle days, the county manager was positioned to hamstring any activity of what used to be known as the Planning Department by not having a line item for, in, in the budget for an activity. And it, I'm hoping we don't drift into that kind of a situation where the Planning Commission, that used to be part of the system, I can't really spend time that has not had an allocated line item in the budget. You know, it has been a practical problem, you know, kind of the tail of the dog, kind of an issue. I, I, I just hope that we don't drift into that pattern. I've forgotten the other county manager's name. Nice young man, not Bill Barron, but the, that was, that was simply it. That unless you had a line item in the budget, the formerly known, that which was formerly known as the Planning Department was not permitted to expend time on a subject. Period.
Thanks for your comment, Commissioner Strickland. Any other questions from Commissioner Orr or Kwong on either the short-term rental deal or other special, special projects?
I have not got all the information. Obviously, I need, and this is perhaps not the time, but it seems like in terms of the target, county's efforts on the term, Arch Cape is one. And there's one other, I believe, what is the other area that's being targeted for reform in terms of short-term rental ordinances? If the premise is correct.
So the Arch Cape zoning area has a short-term rental ordinance that's been in effect since about 2003. And that covers just the area that's in the Arch Cape area itself. And then in 2018, the Board of Commissioners adopted Ordinance 1801, which addresses short-term rentals in all the other unincorporated areas of Clatsop County except for Arch Cape. So right now, we operate under two different ordinances. One of the items that we had asked the Board for input on, on February 24 was, should the two ordinances be combined? And that is something where staff then would create a process that would go back to the Board of Commissioners for review and input about how we would create a process, basically, to combine those two ordinances into one.
I see. Thank you.
I had a couple of comments on that. I was, I listened into that meeting. It was really interesting. And I was really surprised that affordable housing wasn't mentioned as part of that conversation. As those of us who live in southwest Clatsop know, there are people living in their cars because they can't find a little cottage to live in, like the one I lived in when I was 25 years old. And part of the reason is because of the proliferation of short-term rentals and the conversion of long, of monthly rentals into short-term rentals. And so I think it's a really important point to bring up whenever we're looking at short-term rentals, that it's not only about community livability, and I certainly think it is, but that right now, we're facing this homelessness crisis in our county and in our state. And, you know, we need to think about the impacts on, on that. If you look at the Affordable Housing Study, it said, you know, specifically Cannon Beach is out of places to put new housing. And they, you know, so people are having to live other places, and there's not that many other places to live. And so I was pleased to see the, the staff question and answer around transferability, because I think that's one of the things we talked about when we talked about affordable housing, that when you allow a short-term rental permit to go from one owner to a new owner, automatically, that potentially increases the price of that real estate as people think they can pay their mortgage with a short-term rental. And so that was a good thing, I think, but it wasn't talked about in terms of, of that potential benefit. I will say that I think from, you know, that certain zones would benefit from some sort of limitation. And, and I think the longer we put that off, the more difficult it will be, because what you can do is grandfather-in, people who currently have permits, so you get away from that potential takings issue. And then over time, either keep it at that level or even decrease it, depending on what is determined to be best. But it's something really, from a southwest community member standpoint, we have to get really serious about now, because we're in a crisis now, but it's only going to get worse as time goes on. And yeah, so I think those are my two main points. Oh, my third point would just be that I think there was some discussion about creating a new committee around these changes. And, you know, here we sit with not a lot on our agenda. So I think it might not be a bad thing to consider, you know, the Planning Commission working on some of these potential changes. Fourth, fourth thing, as an Arch Cape resident, of course, I was present during the short-term rental, the new short-term rental ordinance that went into effect back in 2018 countywide. And I will say, you know, the Arch Cape resident, you know, residents so long ago have been so involved for so long, and they were very careful to develop their ordinance. And so they did not want to extinguish the ordinance and keep it, they wanted to keep it separate from the, the other ordinance. And part of that is because their ordinance, in some ways, is stronger. The, especially the, the seven-day limitation, so that you can only rent your vacation rental once every seven-day period. So you can rent for an entire week, or you can rent a weekend, but you can't do like three rentals in a week. And those of us who live around vacation rentals know that's important because the moving in and moving out part is very disruptive to our communities and can be, have, have impact. So I, I think you'll find a lot of opposition to that if you try to weaken Arch Cape's vacation rentals. And I noted to staff that, at least last time I looked, the vast majority of vacation rentals in our county, the reason that why Arch Cape has that such longer-established short-term rental ordinance is because we have the vast majority of them. And so we bear the brunt of those impacts. And now, of course, Falcon Cove Beach, which is a separate community, but has the same zip code, they are also facing a lot of new building and new vacation rentals. And so that's why you're hearing so many voices from that community now. Commissioner Strickland?
I have a dumb question. What is the jurisdictional entity at Arch Cape that has the power to create an ordinance?
We do not have, we do not have that kind of power. We used to have the community group that was established that would make recommendations up to either the Planning Commission or staff. But as you know, that was extinguished a few years ago. And so now our voices are much diminished in county governance. And so our only opportunity to speak to that is directly to the Planning Commission, County Commission, and to staff.
So, so when you refer to an Arch Cape ordinance, whose ordinance is it that we're, of which we're speaking?
Clatsop County.
Okay.
Other questions or comments around any of the special projects? All right, hearing none, we'll move on. So we have next project status report. Any questions from, for the, from the commissioners on the status report? Straightforward, this is the review of what applications we've approved in the past, and it's been a little while. I know the meteorological tower is going up on the potential wind farm in east, east of Astoria, between Westport and Astoria. All right, hearing none, let's move on to other business. Discussion on parking ratios. Will staff please present the staff report?
So one of the items that the Board of Commissioners included in their strategic plan that was adopted in December of last year was an economic development component. And as part of that, in their Tier 2 action items, they have identified a review of local regulatory barriers to economic development. And so one of the items that staff has also had on its to-do list for several years is to really do an audit of our parking standards. And one of the biggest areas where we find that we have issues is in working with people who want to expand or open a restaurant. And our parking regulations have been very discouraging for people who would like to do that type, operate that type of business within unincorporated Clatsop County. So what we've done for discussion purposes today is we pulled out the parking requirements from the five incorporated cities within the county, which would be Astoria, Warrenton, Girhart, Seaside, and Cannon Beach. And then we also pulled the parking regulations of Tillamook County, since they're very similar to us, basically, in, in terms of population and location. And then we also pulled the Institute of Transportation Engineers Parking Manual. This is their fifth edition. It was published in 2019. And that ITE manual is really the industry standard when looking at developing parking regulations. Or they also have another set of manuals which deals with trip generation and how many trips a particular type of use might generate if it's constructed. So we put these together in a table. You'll see where we've gone through. We've tried to We've tried to line everything up as much as possible. Sometimes it's a little bit apples to oranges when we're comparing different codes. But we've highlighted the areas where we're recommending that some changes be made. And you'll see those highlighted in yellow throughout here. For example, with grocery stores, we are currently operating at six spaces per 1,000 square feet of floor area. And then based on what we see happening in the other communities within the area and in the ITE parking manual regulations, we're recommending that that would be reduced by one space down to five spaces per 1,000 square feet. And so as you look at parking ratios, the thing to remember is that we're not looking to build a parking lot for the day after Thanksgiving. A lot of times, parking lots are built for maximum capacity, which is understandable, but very rarely do they get used to that maximum capacity. And so as parking lots continue to take up more space, it increases land costs. It increases cost of doing business. If a parking lot is paved, or even if it's gravel and the gravel gets compacted over time, it's a place that can increase stormwater runoff and along with that, any pollutants that might go into the groundwater and surrounding areas. So it's important to make sure that a business has adequate parking for their, for their peak hours during the course of any given day. But we really, as a, as a planning staff, would want to discourage building the maximum parking lot for that one day after Thanksgiving shopping day, when everybody's out or everybody's at a particular place, whether, you know, a restaurant, it might be Mother's Day or Valentine's Day, when you reach your maximum capacity. So these items are presented for discussion to the planning commission at this time. Next month, we also want to bring back as part of the parking review and audit, a look at our loading space requirements and things like bicycle parking, motorcycle parking, parking space sizes. And that would be brought forward next month as well. So at this time, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Commissioner Strickland.
I have a reaction. And what I'm reacting, I've forgotten. The, the underlying guiding concept of keeping planning, understandable, simple, plain language, plain talk. And my, my reaction is that this seems absurdly categorized and counted, you know, that someone had a great sense of self-importance to decide whether it should be 4.5 or 4.8 or 5.0 places per 1,000 square feet of occupied space plus one for each employee. But, you know, all these little groupings that seem like the worst of top-down government planning. You know, what, what gave planning a bad name? And that is simply, this, this seems absurdly detailed. And, and if someone else says, oh no, there, we can have twice as many categorizations. We can have ice cream parlors of different sizes. And we can have ice cream parlors that have gelato and those that don't. But it, it just seems that this is going the opposite direction from a command to simplify, period.
Thank you, Commissioner Strickland. Other questions or comments? All right, I had a few. I go back to affordable housing, as we've been talking about. So I just, I, I note that one of the aspects of affordable housing that the planning commission is interested in looking at is accessory dwelling units. And one thing that is, that helps restrict accessory dwelling units are parking requirements. Now, I'm not against keeping it at one, but I'm just wondering if that's something we want to look at, you know, to see, I know that Astoria, for example, allows accessory dwelling units now, but made it required to have two parking spots for those units, which basically prohibits it on, prohibits them in many places in Astoria. This here has it as one, which seems reasonable to me. But again, like, maybe we just want to look at, from an affordable housing standpoint, if we would like to build our housing for, you know, single people and couples, workers in our communities, in already developed places, then that's something we might look at. And also, you know, it's more of a question on answer around the multifamily units and the affordable housing. You know, what is it that we can do to help support the building of those units in our, in our communities, not just in the county, but also in the cities? How does, how does parking play into it? So I'd love to see a little bit of research around that before we finalize those. I know those are ones that were not suggested to be changed at this point, but maybe this is our opportunity to look at it. Yes, Ms. Hendrickson.
Just a couple of reminders to the planning commission. First of all, we do not do the planning for the incorporated areas. So we really can't review and critique their parking standards. The second item I would remind everyone is that because we are planning for an area that's unincorporated and more rural than the cities within the county, I think having one parking space for an affordable housing unit is not unrealistic. A lot of these areas will not be served by public transit. A lot of them are not within walking or easy biking distance from, from employment centers. So I think requiring one space for an affordable dwelling unit, which is well within the industry standards, is certainly not untoward.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. I, you know, I guess I'll just use the example that I know of. When you're talking about ADUs, there, you know, many of our communities have street parking. So do you need off, do you need off-site? I'm really thinking about onsite parking versus off-site parking. And as you know, some of our communities are like cities already. We, you know, not, for better or worse. So now, of course, we've, we think that, I think as a group, we had agreed previously that we would love the affordable housing, you know, to be maximized within cities because of the supportive infrastructure available to cities, more like, you know, sewer and water and bikeability, pedestrian, public transportation. But there are areas in our communities that are already developed that may be appropriate for some higher densities. And if that is prohibitive, let's, let's just look at it. Let's be open-minded. Commissioner Strickland, yeah?
Does requiring parking place undermine the pressure for public transportation? You know, it seems that if you, that parking spaces conflict with the concept of public transportation. And you, if you're going to require one, there's less impetus for the other, period.
That can be true. Thank you, Commissioner Strickland. Did I have anybody else who wanted to talk right now, or I can move on to my next comment?
Move on.
Okay. Um, gosh, the restaurants, there sure are a lot of different kinds. And I had a question on a few of them. So I saw that on page 26, fast food without a drive-through, the suggestion was that there be a quarter of a parking spot per each seat. And so I think with a lot of restaurants that don't have drive-through, the intention is that people either go in and sit, so they drive there often in the county. That's the reality. I wish there were, there was better bikeability and pedestrian and bus in our county, but there's not. So most people are going to drive. And I think, I'm thinking a lot about the business park right now, because this is where a lot of that development is happening, right? And so that one requires a quarter car per seat, where the one with a drive-through requires more parking, almost a half, .4 per seat. And I'm wondering about that discrepancy, Commissioner, Ms. Hendrickson. One second, Commissioner Strickland.
Okay, I think that what was envisioned for fast food without a drive-through is that it was more of a takeout than a, you come in and sit down and enjoy your meal type of place. It would be more of a takeout stand than anything.
But why, why more parking for the drive-through one and less parking for the one that's not drive-through?
I don't know. I'd have to go back and look and see what I've done. Maybe that I've made an error.
Okay. All right. So that's just one that I comment. And then what about, so we have coffee kiosk in here. And what I'm finding is, I'm a supporter of food carts, because I see them as small business incubators, both, you know, and, and, but it's interesting these days to have coffee kiosk called out, but not food carts, especially since coffee kiosks sell an awful lot more than coffee. And, and what happens, you know, when they're, you know, start? Because I do, I do think there's a lot of interest in, in food carts in our county right now. And, you know, how do we, how do we define them differently? And then with food carts, you do have a lot more people kind of driving there, stopping, and then, you know, picnic tables, and then, you know, tents and bonfires. And so how is that? I don't even know what the legality of that is now in our county land. Maybe you could speak to that a little bit, Ms. Hendrickson.
Okay, well, we certainly haven't had any applications for bonfires or things associated with food carts. So depending on whether or not there is a burn ban in place, that may be something that would have to be addressed through state agencies. The only food cart that we've really had come through here in the past three years plus since I've been here was to legitimize the one that's out at the, in Miles, Miles Crossing there, the ship out. That's the only one that we've had come through. We've had a coffee kiosk come through in the same area, but that's really been about it. So we're, we're not hearing the same demand for food carts that the chair is hearing at this point. And certainly not with all those attendant activities with picnic tables and bonfires and all the other accoutrement.
Yeah, so I think they're, they're banned in Seaside. And so what I hear as a South County resident is that people are interested in establishing outside city limits in the Seaside area. And so do we have a part of our comprehensive plan that addresses something like that? An individual food cart or a food cart pod?
Yeah, our comprehensive plan was prepared 40-plus years ago. There was no concept of a food cart or a food park, food cart pod 40 years ago. So no, there is nothing in our plan.
Or sorry, I guess not in the comp plan, but it would be the more like the land use development ordinance, because you have the coffee kiosk, which also didn't exist, I think, 40 years ago.
Right, and we don't really address it as a coffee kiosk per se. It's considered a, a fast food type of restaurant.
Oh, interesting. So you pulled it out as a coffee kiosk in this, but that's not actually how it's talked about in our?
So I don't know what I put it under, coffee or kiosk or restaurant, but it's actually a parking, a separate parking category in the ITE manual. And I believe I highlighted it because it's one that we need to add to our code. The ITE manual did not specifically, I don't think it addressed a fast food cart pod. But I would have to go back and double-check that. But again, the whole idea is to incorporate some additional uses that weren't recognized 40 years ago or that didn't exist. And so food, food cart would be one that we could specifically address as well.
Commissioner Strickland, sorry for the delay.
No, I, I think I heard in reference to all the development that has taken place in the county business park. I haven't been out driving for the past year, but what? Tell me about this massive development that has gone on in the county business park. I've, I've totally missed it. I, I, I think it may have been you who, who mentioned development in the county business park. Did I miss here?
No, no, you didn't. I think that the business park, you know, there's the front of the business park that you see on the highway, and there's been significant development there. But there's also a lot around Costco and Walmart.
So is Costco still considered part of the county business park? I thought the county business park was across the street from it, where they, they cut down trees because of homeless camps where we're using it instead.
Ms. Henderson.
So you're including Costco as being part of the so-called county business park. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just, I was just, I know that there's a, there's a lot of discussion on the county commission and staff side right now about, you know, how to get things east of that development developed, right? And so if we're getting a bunch of new commercial development, that is an opportunity area. If that's where it's going to happen.
I mean, I didn't know that we were getting development in that area. It, it has looked like homeless camps having been ruined by trees being cut down in that area. I haven't seen any development, and that's, that's why I was asking.
Any other? I have one more.
I see where Walmart is, I see where Costco is, I see where Goodwill is, I see where Ford is, I see where the sheriff is. But I, I didn't realize that was considered county business park.
I'm not really sure what it's designated at this point. I'm just picturing, you know, Panda Express, Wendy's, you know, so when you're looking at these standards, you know, how do we want to envision that area, but also throughout the county, all of our commercially zoned properties? We, you know, we even have some in Arch Cape, where the deli, the deli site, but not just the deli site. So all these little areas, this is what these parking standards are going to affect, right?
Does the county even care about the county business park and what's done in it now? Or do they figure, oh no, that, that's entirely Warrenton's issue?
I think you, if you follow the commission meetings, of course, the county cares on what happens east of there, because they still own a significant portion of land there.
They own it, but, but it is not their planning jurisdiction, correct?
Ms. Hendrickson, is that true? Is it within Warrenton city limits there?
Yes, the property that the county currently owns that's vernacularly identified as the North Coast Business Park is within the city limits of Warrenton. However, our parking standards would not apply to any development in that area, because Warrenton standards would apply.
Oh, that's a great clarification. Thank you so much. Yeah, so that's good to know. Okay, my other significant comment is just around the parks. And one space per acre feels like kind of strange to me. And to me, like, I feel like a park, I don't know how a city would do it, but the parking needs of a park depends on who's going there for what and how many people, not how big the park is. And in the county's deal, most of our parks are actually natural areas that don't have assets, right? So you have Colby Lake, and you have the John Day Boat Launch, which have significant public usage. But then you have the, you know, the county park spruce, or the, you know, the big piece at the top of Highway 26 that's not visited by the public. So that doesn't feel like the right parking standard to me. I feel like it should be more around, is there a playground there? Is there a boat launch? You know, things like that, some more complexity around it. And I'm sure that the recreational lands plans might say something to that, you know, of that. But it, it feels to me like it should be more based on that hu- human usage and less around the size. And, and also, some of our parks is significantly large, because if you put that, then I think you'd have to have like- More based on that hu- human usage and less around the size and and also some of our parks is significantly large, because if you put that, then I think you'd have to have like, you know, twenty seven spots and at a park that maybe doesn't have any public usage, so. Maybe it only matters if there's like a like a development, but I just want to make sure that we're not putting in parking spaces where they're not needed, and they'll actually hurt the natural resources of our. Natural area parks. Comments, questions, commissioners? Last chance.
What is the Clutchy Creek, yeah, you know, roughly blocks that area, and how does that compare with the standard?
Ms. Hendrickson, when would this be triggered in a place like Clutchy Clutchy Creek?
Only if there was some sort of significant redevelopment, we would not make it retroactive and require. Any existing parks or businesses to go and now meet these current requirements.
So if there was a bathroom put in, which is really needed actually at that park. Would that trigger this? So then you'd be required to have one spot per the acreage of that park.
No, that unless it was a really significant bathroom facility, you know, with ten stalls for every. Area. I wouldn't foresee the need to go back and retroactively require additional parking at Clutchy Creek. In fact, they just added a bathroom.
Oh, they did?
They applied for the permit and were approved, so.
Oh, it's needed, it's just been some gross party pies, this whole COVID yasco.
And right, right now, there is no parking standard for parks, so that was why we had suggested including it in there. Right now, it's just done on a case by case basis, when the. Parks department comes in and says, we're building a park, we think we need this many parking spaces, we say, okay.
All right. Go ahead and move on. Any final comments before we adjourn?
Not for me.
All right, thanks, everybody, for attending this regular Clatsy County Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, March ninth, twenty twenty one. Stay safe out there. And you next month.